You get all the cool stuff.
What do you have, Danielle? What is that? You want a tablet?
Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, August 1st, 2017. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes on reports received and filed.
I have January 3rd, 2017 auditor's monthly reports to file.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Oh, we got the fair all week. Livestock talks Wednesday. I'm not, still not sure if it's the Cole County Fair or just the Jefferson City JC's Fair. I've heard it's different.
No, all the radio commercials are saying the JC Cole County Fair.
I've seen it in different, different places. But I'm not one to stir things up.
Yeah, right.
Make sure you get that in minutes, Lynn.
Cole County Communities Thursday morning, Cole County Extension Thursday night. And then we have the auction Friday morning for the 4-H Hams. Eastside Business Association's Friday morning too. Don't miss it. That's all I got.
Did you say the Communities breakfast on Thursday?
Yeah.
Did?
Yeah. Wasn't canceled or anything, was it?
Nope. Uh, Wednesday, the Columbia Regional Airport's having a kickoff. Reunited Airlines is coming in.
Yeah, the Denver service.
Yeah. Got the Community Breakfast Thursday morning. Community Health Center's having a opioids roundtable, I think at nine with Congress of Lüktmeyer's coming. So I'm gonna try to make that. Friday's Country Hand Breakfast, Three Rivers Co-ops Annual Meeting is at Friday night. So, that's all I got.
Are you going to that?
I don't know yet. It's out on my calendar.
Okay. Yeah, I got the invite. I just, I can't make it.
So I'm supposed to have a salute meeting on Wednesday? And then, are we having a safety meeting on Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay. At Thursday at nine, right here. Okay, that's it.
Bids and contracts. Approval and signing of contract amendment for WIC.
This is an increase in funding for $1,500 to cover Molina's travel to Oregon to look at the other programs, nutritional assessment, ABT cards and things like that.
I move that we approve the amendment to contract ERS 051041517070 with DHSS.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Get that, Lynn?
I did.
Okay. Bid awards. 2017-23 Commercial Kitchen Hood Cleaning Services.
We only got one bid for the hood cleaning services. The price seems reasonable the first time. Cleaning and certification is for $700. And then you guys have the hourly service rate and stuff beneath that. But the recommendation is for Hood Technologies Fire and Safety.
Is this just for the sheriff? Or have we ever done that at Springer?
I asked Greg if it needed to be done and he said no.
Probably ought to look at it.
Now, John, be nice.
Oh, I am being nice. I really do think that there's some stuff there that we might need to look at. No, no offense against Greg. I just don't want to fire him.
So do we have a contract or is this just an award?
It's just an award right now.
I move that we award the Kitchen Hood Cleaning Services to Hood Technologies.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2017-31 Inmate Food Service.
You guys should have the bid tab in front of you. You can kind of play with the numbers. Yell at us far as different scenarios. We also have our sheriff table we ordered for.
We're recommending the Trinity. That's the second lowest. The reason why we want to go with Trinity is number one, the budget, it's more budget neutral. It's about the same amount of money that we budgeted right now. They also have an alternative food service for behavioral modification. So in other words, in some of our lower classifications, these guys can actually order hamburgers, stuff like that. Now, they have to pay for it. It's out of their commissary. We don't pay for it. But it's another way for us to be able to modify behaviors inside our facility. And then the last thing is they're owned by, or they own Keefe, which we currently carry for our commissary. So it'll be a nice, smooth transition. We only have one person to yell at if something goes wrong.
So CBN was the lowest? Is that counted?
No. And we called around. And CBN did not have very good recommendations from other sheriff's departments.
Okay.
Actually not.
That's good.
Yeah, I was just looking through it. Some of it, just seeing where their differences were at and I think giving them the alternative food. Because I get that complaint a lot, is that people don't get enough to eat in there. So I thought we could maybe, if we had room, we could do it as a diet program or something, you know? Go to jail for a week.
Well, actually, people that leave our facility are actually usually heavier than they leave. The problem is, is the food that we serve, because of the amount of people we serve, it's gotta be bland. Because, you know, if you put spicy food out, then people are gonna get playing with it. It's too spicy and they won't eat it all. At least if it's bland, they eat. So we are compliance with the chloric, is that right? Chloric intake? Wow, anyone who did that work. Okay, so we are compliance with that on the amount of calories we're supposed to serve each day. Like I said, we weigh people when they come in and we would weigh people when they leave. And I would say 90% of the times they're heavier, so.
That's weird.
Yeah, well, I mean, like I said, the food's not bad. I've ate it. I mean, but the problem is it's really bland. And, you know, there's other little comfort things that they can't get from us. They can't get from commissary. We don't serve coffee. Matter of fact, we don't serve any caffeinated products. Salt and pepper, they can get some of the little that comes with the meal. But if they want more, they have to buy it themselves. But they can't get that in a lot.
Good. It's not supposed to be perfect over there.
That's right.
I couldn't make it without coffee.
And if they want that stuff, then they have to.
Then don't go to jail.
Once I told Azir that there's no coffee there, I'm pretty sure he will never break the law. But he, but there's several things that they can do. They can buy on their own through commissary, but through their own funds. And Keefe, another thing, another good reason is going with Keefe, since they own the same thing, we're able to get a kiosk inside the pots. And the prisoners are able to order the stuff themselves. So it takes time from us having to do the ordering. So it's gonna be a force multiple for us. Once we get them in there. That's, you know, it's gonna be a three, four months before it happens.
So is this, I mean, is there gonna be quite a change to get this new service in there and the other service out? Or?
No, I don't believe so. We've got the 30 days. We'll come up with a plan. I think they actually, and I apologize, I didn't read this. But I'm pretty sure they have a plan in here that shows how they're gonna start the taking over the process and weeding the other group out. They're actually gonna send some people before they finally start or when it begins, so.
We got this set up to where it's a one-year contract with renewals for up to three or whatever? Okay.
Are we gonna purchase trays?
We will. We will purchase trays. As we spoke, we're gonna order those. We're waiting to see if the people leaving want to sell the ones they got. So, so once we figure that stuff out, then we'll report.
This is what we rebid, right?
Yes, sir.
So did that price come in any better?
Yes, sir.
Good. Cool.
So the previous service, they provided their own trays and silverware or?
When we first opened the facility, one of the contract bids for the food management was they had to provide all the smallwares, is that what they call it? The smallware, which includes the trays and stuff. Now, why we did that, I don't know. And truthfully, we did so many contracts, you know, there's no telling online, we did it that way. But it's easier if we buy our own smallware. And it's gonna cost less than, I think, we figured it up, it's gonna cost less than $10,000. But from this point on now, if a vendor, a food vendor leaves, we don't have to worry about them leaving with all their stuff and then we're scrambling around, not only to make food, but we're also scrambling around for pots and pans and trays. It's a better deal in the long run for us.
Okay.
And I think we'll be able to absorb those costs after we do the rest of it. We'll be able to buy those in our budgets without adjusting.
Okay. Just a bid award or?
We will have a contract, but this was only open on Friday and we just hustled to get it on today.
Okay.
So I'll wait for Jill to get that.
I move that we award food services to Trinity Services Group.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have any unfinished business? Okay, new business, accounts payable review?
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
I think I got one in there. I didn't get to look at them. Do you remember?
Yeah, you probably do.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Okay. Second and final reading of budget adjustment number three.
This is for the $650 for the juvenile center. This is the fostering court grant. I do need action today. It's adding to the existing grant. They had 1,000, now it's 1,650. And the grant's on the backside.
Is this a, is this court order number three or budget adjustment number three or both? One in the same?
I call it budget adjustments. We just do it on a court order form.
Okay. Well, what do you want to call it?
Budget adjustment number three.
Okay. I move that we approve and sign budget adjustment number three.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye. I was just gonna pick on Debbie. Call it something else. Whatever you wanna call it, Debbie.
We want to do what the minutes say.
Do whatever you want, Debbie.
Second and final reading of budget adjustment number four.
This is for $8,470, again a juvenile grant. This is from the very Department of Court Services, OSC. Legal support for custody cases. The grant's behind that. I think Michael was up here the last time we brought it up and talked about it.
So an in and out of 8460?
Yes.
I move that we approve and sign budget adjustment number four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second and final reading of budget adjustment number five.
This is $1,500 and it's for the WIC program. It's the actual, the application or the order you just signed this morning. Just to increase the budgets.
I move that we approve and sign court order number five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we want to do the WaveCo first and then come into Jerry?
That's fine.
Yeah, let's, approval and sign of change order number two for WaveCo.
I'm not sure if it was actually attached.
No, it wasn't.
Not on the agenda.
There's the whole project itself. Here's just the actual listing of the transfer. Or, I'm sorry, the court order.
Change order.
Whatever you wanna call it.
Okay.
Today is your day.
Today's my day.
Okay, so change order number two is electrical deactivation project screening controls, 63250. HVAC, replace ceiling diffusers in west side of collector's office with damper regulation, 720. Remove tile flooring beneath carpet and breezeway, 299. Remove installed chair rail and commission chambers, 373. Patch chamber floor, 112. Remove projector, 533. Paint doors and hallways, 374. Total of $3,045.75. I don't know if you guys could follow that on this other sheet or not.
On the other sheet, it's at the very bottom group.
Okay.
That's a combination of everything.
Now, it's all down there at the bottom?
Yes.
Okay.
Still separated out between the collector and the county who's paying, so.
Just want to see that.
As you're aware, I'm sure some of these things have already been completed. But, you know, when we're in the middle of a construction project, we have to keep going as far as that goes. But I did ask Mr. Wish to let us know ahead of time and that it has to be approved before anything gets done, other than what was on the original agreement. I just told him that the day before yesterday after we got this change order. So, most of this stuff has already been done. So I don't know, Larry, can you tell about where we are downstairs as far as? Almost completed? 80%? What would you say?
I'd probably say 80%. I think next Wednesday or Thursday, they're gonna tear all the counters out that they was in. And then the only thing left is some flooring behind the counter. We didn't carpet up behind the counter, put some vinyl plating or something. And then the solid surface top, it's gonna take a couple weeks to get that made.
Is the recorder completely done?
No.
No.
They're moving in, well, they're doing electric today, I believe, for him. But his furniture's not, it's not as gentle. They're moving in temporary workstation flooring.
Kristi Lee.
To use until that comes.
I guess.
The painter's got, if you all heard, the paint they put on in my office and on the back wall of the gray. The paint didn't come onto the wall, so they have to scrape it all off and paint it over. Put a bonding agent on and repaint it. That's gonna happen most weeks sometime.
Maybe we want to know if you guys need to buy tickets.
Yeah, I need some tickets. Think as much money as I spent there, give me some free ones.
For the most part, they should be about 9% by the end of next week.
Who gave you tickets for that?
Payby, I'm supposed to sell them.
Oh, sell them. I'll just pay at the door. You lost us.
I wanted Larry to give you an update because we are, I'm actually gonna have another bill submitted in, actually sent to this accounts payable. And it does put us at 80% completion of the project after we pay this bill.
Okay, that's what I was curious, what we were updating it for? Just, so we're at 80% completion is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Cool.
Bill paying and Larry thinks maybe a week or a week and a half out, depending on. There are.
Two odds.
Yeah.
What did we have budgeted for this?
Well, we started, it was just painting and carpeting.
We're at about 110 when we started.
But we added this whole building part.
Yeah, and just kinda keeping that one separate though from everything else that we had originally bid and budgeted for is still within constraints of what we had, right?
Right. Other than this, basically.
Okay, 'cause I'm not including all of that remodel in with it.
Because that was a weird change order because it was right at the beginning. So to me, it was part of the project to get.
Yeah, I agree. But I was just asking where we're at with the paint and trim work and flooring and stuff. That's all still in there, so.
There are a few other things that maybe people would like done as far as the painting goes. I know, like, they painted that door out there in the walkway. I don't know if you noticed a match, all the rest of the doors.
Oh, yeah, I noticed that. Right off the bat.
Yeah. Well, the other door going into the courthouse building and stuff, it's still that cream color. And then we also have, like, the elevator on the third floor of this building. It's the only one that doesn't have the dark color around it and the dark door. So it kinda makes it hard when you're painting just certain places. And even the doorway going up the steps. This side of it is dark and the other side of it's the cream.
How come all of it wasn't? How come all of it wasn't bid to be painted?
We were kinda told to stay on the first and second floor and the stairwells, which is fine. That's what they did. But when you go in the other side, half the door's painted and half of it isn't. You know what I mean, Jeff? One side of it's painted and when you split the frame in half when you're painting, it just looks odd. It's up to you guys whether you want me to bring you a list of that kind of stuff and the costs or not.
Let's go look at it after the meeting. Because if you do that, where do you stop?
I don't.
But some of it, I mean, I'll be thinking of the right doors. Let's look at it after the meeting. Unless you all are wanting to go ahead with it or whatever.
What's that?
To paint and this other stuff they're wanting done.
We can look at it after the meeting.
That's fine. Can we approve this change order?
Yeah.
Good with that? I move that we, we need to sign this, Debbie, or?
Yes, if you would.
Is there a place to sign on that or? I move that we approve and sign change order number two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Y'all said collector's paying for all those, right?
No, not those changes.
Gotta try, Larry.
We'll go back, discussion of budget transfers and staffing for EMS.
Here are the two transfers. If you have, you got copies.
What would you like to discuss?
So we're gonna do the budget transfers first?
Yep.
Yeah.
That's fine. So obviously, there's two transfers here. One coming out of contingency for parts, $10,000, and one coming out of contingency for uniforms. So obviously, just trying to kinda look at the budget and just see. It seemed like at one point, talking about parts, that we were kinda transferring from repairs to parts. And I thought maybe we were kinda just itemizing it a little bit differently and it was not a big deal.
And I haven't had a chance to, I started working on my budget. But I think to get a better handle on all this, we should start consolidating some of those accounts. Not consolidating them all into one to say maintenance, because that's too hard to track where your money's going. But we were a little hesitant to move out of repairs because we've had a couple fairly significant repairs lately as our fleet gets older. We're putting turbos on and oil coolers on and major suspension parts. We've had a couple $3,000 and $4,000 repairs. So we, I was just trying to avoid doing this in November or December again. So that's why we selected contingency. We can try the other way. It just may be a case where we'll have to come back. I don't remember exactly what's in the repair budget. I ran a copy the other day. We've used about 61% of $43,000. So that would be $26,000. So it would probably be a little shy. We'd have to come back and put some back in repairs. And that's a bigger, I think, discussion that we need to have as we move toward the 18 budget is, do we, do we want to put a lot of money in aging ambulances versus doing remounts or buying new ambulances? At some point, you, you don't get much return back on your investment by putting, say, a $10,000 motor and an $8,000 ambulance. But that, that's a bigger discussion because this repair budget's gonna have to increase next year again. So if we take it from repairs, chances are, we're gonna have to come back in a couple months and fix the repair budget.
Where are we going? 2017, budget 2017, Debbie?
Yeah.
Under Commission's budget?
Yeah, you can go there if you want to look in BSNA. They got the update this morning.
You got that report that Debbie sent on 6:30 or whatever that?
Yeah, I can go back on that if you did too.
It was all the bills that were paid out of repairs and parts. If you get to that email, you can actually go right back into that invoice. In 17, we budgeted just in parts, $14,240. We did transfer, what's that, transfer out? No, transferred in $11,000. We're at $25,200. Currently, we have $5,000 in there. If he's doing that transfer, basically to make it last all year, for the rest of the year. We did end up in 16 at $20,200. We're right, right now, already at 25.
So it just looks like maybe we need to adjust some numbers maybe going forward. But, I mean, we haven't hardly used any fuel for the first six months. Is that kinda?
They probably haven't submitted the bills yet from, I'll look here. Since we get billed from the Public Works. You get them every month. One, two, three, four, five, six. Yeah, so you have six bills in there. And they're anywhere from $55,000 to $65,000 a month. I was thinking they were still.
$55,000 to $65,000 for what?
100.
100, sorry.
I'm like, damn!
It's not my week this week. Yeah, I'm looking right at it.
Those transfers are eating up gas.
$65,000, yeah. $55,000 to $65,000, yeah. And we budgeted about $110,000 in there. And we have about $74,000 left.
I don't have anything else on the parts. I just, I mean, we could, we could transfer out of one of the others, but, you know, we might come back. But, I mean, I think, for me, it's just looking at the year-end numbers and trying to adjust the budget to fit what we're, what we're gonna use. At some point, I think we need to look at central maintenance again too, so.
Yeah, I think we kinda changed up how we were taking stuff out of budget. We were using for repairs and parts and supply and stuff.
Well, I guess, originally, I thought that, you know, a part and a repair are kind of a hand-in-hand deal. I mean, you know, if you're putting. I mean, you know, if you're putting more in parks and not classifying the labor or whatever as the repair, I mean, it could be a wash one way or the other, depending on how you're entering into the system.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's, ambulances down this last month. Yeah, we're still in July, I guess, aren't we?
So would you like that one that's, how much is the one coming out of contingency, I guess?
It's $10,000 for contingency to parts.
Would you want that to come out of fuel? Because it looks like there's going to be plenty of fuel.
I don't know. Does auditor have a preference?
In the past, we've always tried to use other lines in the budget before we hit contingency unless it's something unforeseen. But it's really up to you there.
I mean, it looks like we're going to have enough in fuel. I'd say we take it out of fuel and then see where we end up at the end of the year.
I'm fine either way. I can argue either way.
Okay, so we'll just adjust this one. You okay with that?
Yeah.
We'll still see at the end of the year what we were originally budgeted for fuel and.
Yeah, that one's always a moving target, anyway.
And we base, I think we usually base it on what Larry comes up with, based on what they've used, so.
Used, and you're trying to get a crystal ball for what the?
The rates, yeah.
The price of fuel is going to be. We do bid it. We do bid it.
Yeah.
Well, they do phone bids every time they purchase. It's not like a bid that's a set price for.
Nobody will give you a bid, Larry.
But we're doing the budget in 17. We don't know what it's going to be for 18.
Correct.
But they look at the future outlook?
Yes, they looked at some index that they use to do that.
Okay, then we got this transfer for uniforms for $21,000. I mean, obviously, is there some things that we can wait until next year to purchase, or?
The biggest thing is coats. One of the things, when I came here, I was told that they quit buying the jacket that they used before because it didn't meet the ANSI DOT requirements and the wear was bad. And so we waited. We just limped through last year, kind of recycling various different coats. So we put coats in the bid this year. So that's the biggest part of this, is if we buy coats for half of the staff, it's $9,200. So my plan was to try and get all the full-time staff coats and then recycle what they're using back to the part-time staff and finish the part-time staff and the admin staff next year. Because it is a, it's a big expense. There's no, it doesn't matter what kind of EMS coat you get that's DOT approved. It's over 200 bucks a jacket, even on bid. So that's the biggest thing. The other part, the guess of this is, we believe that we're going to have to hire somewhere between 10 to 15 part-timers over the course of the rest of the year to help us continue to reduce our overtime. And while part-timers don't cost you anything, once they're hired and trained, the upfront cost is pricey because you have to outfit them with uniforms, you've got to train them with payroll and all that stuff. So we did a look and it looks like about 300 bucks a person for uniforms to get them started. That number can go from 3,000 to 45,000. I'd like to hire a minimum of 10 or at least five or six paramedics. Because we're just too thin right now. And even though we're waiting till the last minute to authorize overtime, that's come back to haunt us, too. So those are the biggest ticket items that are out there. The rest, I don't, Valerie put 80 pullovers on here. I don't think we need 80 pullovers. Those are, we don't need one for everybody. Everybody, most everybody, that's a standard issue. The people we've hired over the summer months, we probably didn't buy one. We could probably cut that by half, at least half, if not more. But again, like I said, the biggest thing is the hiring and the jackets.
So 2017, we budgeted $16,000. And 2000, I'm sorry, 17. In 2016, we spent $14,400. Right now, we only have $65 left in that budget.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the thing for me is that, you know, we bought some new uniforms and we bought some badges and stuff. And we had it in the budget. And now we're out of money. And then I see this transfer for a lot of money. And anyway.
Well, I'll be honest, I would have thought that whoever did the budget last year would have had these coats in there. Because I was told that they purposefully withheld buying coats because they didn't meet the DOT specs and the coat they had was not of quality that was seeming to last more than a year, 18 months. So I would have thought that that would have been included. I don't know if it was or if it wasn't. But again, I was told that when I came, that they didn't buy any one coat starting in about October. Because that was the plan.
Got anything?
I'm still trying to get to some of the budget stuff. Password. Was this on here? One chart there?
It should have been on the email that said uniform.
Just under uniforms?
Yeah. Here's a detail of what the budget request is based on.
Jerry, do you guys have a plan as far as who gets a coat when, or is it?
Historically, there hasn't been. There's going to be now.
I mean, Rudden Bridge, they have a set list of you get a coat once a year, or you get a pair of bibs once a year, or whatever. And if you ruin whatever, you know, if it's not because of your work or something, then you pay for the next pair because you only get allotted so much each year.
Yeah, I'm trying to do that with everyone. But we've got to get, got to get everybody set up for, right now, it's all over the map.
Right.
And these are going to be different coats that you're getting now, right?
Yeah, yeah. They'll be the reflective, god-awful yellow color.
But I mean, is that something that we're supplying in? I mean, Rudden Bridge is a little different and they could wear that stuff wherever. So I mean, is this part of the uniform?
This is part of the uniform.
And so we get it back?
Yes. And in our world, you can only wear, in policy, you can only wear your uniform to work, from work, and that's it. And we get all this stuff back when they leave.
I guess, except shoes. I mean, we'll provide shoes.
Because nobody wants to.
Well, if this is reflective, it's like if there is a traffic accident.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's a DOT regulation. We have to have that. Right now, we have this vest for the summer, but we have to use the vest in the winter, too, because we don't have anything that's compliant with the regulation.
So year-to-date balance is what we have left. We have $11,000 left in uniforms.
$65, I think, is what you said.
There's a purchase order out there, and I'm not sure what that is for, but for $4,063, but.
Probably the most recent.
Yeah, I can get to it. Yeah, it's purchase order. Actually, it says, "Uniform badges." Maybe we never closed that purchase order out. If she didn't attach it, then. It was done at the end of April. Probably was, because that's about how much they were.
Well, we just completely changed the uniforms, so I don't think that was budgeted.
Yeah, that's why we only did about a fourth of the staff.
Yeah. I saw Kim Sunday, and she's wearing a red t-shirt. We gave those, but I'm really careful about wearing that because I figure somebody's going to say, "Hey, somebody over here is choking, come save." I'm careful where I wear that.
I'm not a fan of t-shirts, but.
Yeah. When it's hot, it's.
Historical here from the month of July, so it's okay.
How much was that transfer into uniforms, I guess?
Transfer for, for 21.6.
Six.
At least in this PO, we'll give them a little bit more money in there, but not that much.
So the PO was against the $16,000 they had in their budget?
Sure looks like it.
So they have $4,000 some odd dollars left.
I'm trying to update my PO. Yeah, I got $4,000. I dropped that $65.
I guess where I'm at is, obviously, that's a big transfer. I mean, I could probably live with maybe half of that coming out of somewhere else, except from contingency. I know you weren't here for the budget process, but I mean, I understand maybe the coats, but had we kind of known some of that stuff, maybe we would have waited on some other things there. So I'd just like to get through this year, look at next year, and see where we're going to be. If we have some other areas where we can transfer out of, just like we did with repairs. I don't know what that would be, but.
We can, I can work on that. We can all work on that.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, I, you know, if you put off jackets for a couple of years, I mean, that was probably something we should have looked at in the budget time. I don't know why they didn't include that, but.
I have no idea.
I'm not sure we have the new uniform badges and.
Right.
No, we didn't. We didn't. And we were kind of in transition, too.
It was, was. Well, along those lines, when we talked about the badges, they were approved, but we never saw a price. So, and I didn't agree to them, but, and we never saw a price before they were purchased. So that's something we need to know before we buy them things, too. So I'd be like telling them, "Go buy some furniture," and then they just go ahead and get the leather models with beepers on them when they're backing up. So I don't know. I think if I knew the price on the badges, I was still at no, but I thought they were pretty exorbitant. As far as the uniforms, if we didn't talk about coats at budget time this last year, then they can surely wait. We can use vests till the end of the year and look at 18. That's where I'm at with that. If it's not something we have to have right now.
Again, we're just, this was to get us through the rest of the year. So we don't have to make, we can leave that $9,200 out. But we got to get coats sometime. We got to, we have to put our people in coats when the weather turns. So it's kind of kicking the can, but it'll give us time to look at other accounts.
But you don't have to have $9,200 coats.
Well, that's what we have to bid. It was bid.
Right. But you don't have to have $9,200 coats. You can put coats on them, but they don't have to be the $500 coats. Or spend it on them.
So I guess what you're saying is use what we got with the vests, although it's not ideal. Look at it later, next year, or whatever.
The other coats are reflective and DOT-approved or whatever. But we have a vest you can put on the other coats. These here are. The ones that they're bidding.
Yeah.
The ones they have now, they have coats. It's not like we're telling our kids to go out there, stay and wait for the bus without a coat on them. They have a coat.
No, there's a good share of employees that don't have a coat. Because we have bought them coats.
So what do they wear during the wintertime?
They haven't worked in the winter. No one hired since October has been, had a coat purchased for them.
So what happened to the old coats when we lost people, or have we hired that many people?
They're hanging in the closet. In various states of repair and disrepair.
How many people have we hired since COVID or whatever? And by this year and then by?
Thirty-five, forty.
Of all of them.
That was the plan, was to split it up into halves, buy half this year and half next year. I'm not sure buying half next year and half the following year works. That puts us way out there.
I'm fine with putting uniforms on the people. If they don't have a coat at all, that's a problem. The way I'm understanding is they have coats, we also have the vests that they need to be safe out there. So we can limp our way through the end of this year. So that's what I was under the impression of. But we hired five new people, so I'd understand they would need more uniforms. But then if we're losing people and we're having to replace them, we should still have their coats. I'm not sure how they get, you know, there's going to be normal wear and tear, but it's not like Public Works where they're rubbing them against trucks and stuff, so they should last a little longer.
Be surprised.
Oh, I, yeah.
Be surprised.
I think you're in and out of those ambulances and you're in, moving those cots and stuff around. I think you probably.
Accident scenes up and down hills, they get worn. It's not like Public Works from up the second, but they do get worn out.
Our release in that PO out there, it did add, now they have $4,128 in that account, uniforms. So we can prioritize that transfer to at least $15,000. Is it 21 or?
21.6. No, I think we, I disagree with you, Jeff. I'm sorry.
That never happens.
I think, well, I've been agreeing with you a lot lately, but I just, I think.
I just think it sends the wrong message to hire a new employee and then put them in a bunch of used uniforms. I just think it sends the wrong message.
My parents must have hated me then because I got a lot of rum and sell stuff. They sent me the wrong message. I'm going to call mom and say, "We done here."
Two years, at least.
So.
It's like anything else. One of your kids will make their stuff last for five years and the other, like, eight. But average, most uniforms, everything on a uniform lasts two years, that's standard.
So I guess, you know, we outfit a new employee, they leave, we get all their stuff back. I mean, what are we doing with that stuff? I mean, if it.
We keep it as spares and things like that. You know, like I said, I want to put everybody on the cycle, and I want to stagger the cycle, both from the purchase and cash flow perspective. But before we can do that, I got to get everybody up to speed first. The spare uniforms, so if someone trashes a pair of pants in the middle of the cycle, that's the employee you can issue a used pair of pants to. Because we, it's almost like. Walmart. We got about every size there is, tall, short, fat, thin. We've got quite a...
I'm about a year long, I can change sizes myself.
So, so that, that's what we, I would suggest we use that for. I just, I just think it sends the wrong message to put a new employee in used stuff. We've been doing that. We've been doing it quite a bit, actually.
I think if we haven't replaced them in approximately two years, I think. I'd rather have them out there in, in something that meets DOTs.
The vest does meet DOT. I haven't argued with you in a while, Sam.
I know. No, I just...
So when you uniform, how many shirts and pants do they get?
Part-timers get two of each, pull timers get three of each.
I don't disagree. I mean, when they start, they, they should have something new. But coats will be, coats are a little different. I mean, as far as the rest of the uniform, coats, I...
Don't focus on the DOT stuff. We gotta get them coated no matter what. And generally speaking, coats are about the same price, give or take. I'm good with getting the coats. I mean, I'd like to see us hold off on some of that other stuff that was in there. I'm not saying that I don't, wouldn't approve the pullovers or some of that other stuff, but I'd like to see that next year's budget. You know, obviously, you probably have some long-sleeve shirts that you wear in the winter, I was saying, I, I don't know. No.
I think most people wear a...
Just something underneath.
Shirt or something underneath.
Yeah. You've got the fleece.
You've got a fleece, too.
Fleece, I think I see a lot of those. I just think we need, I think we need the coats.
Well, there's two of them, so you can get the coats. Do you want it out of contingency, or do you want them to find somewhere else?
I'd like to see it come out somewhere outside of the budget, but...
Let me do some looking. I'm starting to get creative with the numbers.
Figure the budget scenario and stuff out. Let me, let me do some looking. You okay with that? So, if we can hold off on some of that other stuff, maybe the pullovers and anything else, and let's get, get some of the coats.
Yeah.
Well, we have reduced the uniforms line from, I don't know, probably two thousand and fifteen, it was around twenty thousand, and I just lost it here. Now it's at sixteen, so... In your defense, it is less now than what it was three or four years ago.
I'm sure it's based on what they'd actually had used. In fifteen, they, actually, it looks like they only used ten thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars. So that's part of why it was reduced. And the same in sixteen going to seventeen, because they only had used fourteen thousand four hundred, so...
Yeah, and if we're adding part-timers to help get rid of the overtime, then, you know, that's just part of the cost of doing business there, so I understand why it's going up. We might need a little more of it.
Well, you had those ugly tan polos that I'm sure didn't cost a lot.
That way, nobody steals them, Sam.
I know. I think we should have a bonfire and just kind of...
I can give some of those to you. Wear them.
It's not my color.
Okay.
So, you got the okay on the coats. Figure out where you want to take it from, if you can take it from somewhere else, or...
Tony's still got four thousand left in his budget for some of those incidental stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you're probably gonna need some more stuff before the end of the year.
Yeah, he's got future orders. I'll just try and limp it through. Yeah.
Is that coat's gonna be coats for everybody, or we're gonna, is that partial?
That's partial.
Partial.
So for eighteen, we're looking to do more.
Another, another half in eighteen. But like pullovers, they're only thirty-five dollars or something like that. If somebody doesn't have a pullover, when it gets to be fall time, I can get a pullover one off. They're the same price, one versus twenty-one, so I, if they don't have one, I can get them one. To be honest, I would be off until December anyway. I heard Missouri has my own way, so...
Now you just...
Boy, are you in for a surprise.
Get ready for the snow. We're gonna be putting snow plows on your handles here before you know it.
How they do that, with the garbage trucks?
There you go.
In some of the cities. They put a blade on the garbage trucks.
Yeah, we'll work on those transfers then and submit it back to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
The rest of what I have is closed session.
Anything else?
The last time I submitted, we talked about a transfer for the Amron case. We have some bills here totaling over twenty thousand, three fifty-three thirty-seven. I don't know if you guys want to talk about that now, but here's the transfer, and I sent you an itemized list of what we spent as of now on that case, and I'm not sure where we are as far as the court case goes and the...
I think we need to talk about that in closed session under legal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because we're talking about how much we're wanting to keep proceeding with it and everything, and...
I agree. We need to get that probably on the agenda.
I'll put that on next week sometime then.
We do need to talk about, though. It's, let us start calling and getting their rooms reserved for them instead of them picking their own.
Yeah.
I think you do need to sign the transfer that's there, that's costs we've already incurred. I mean, I think we have to pay the bill that's out there. I mean, you can go decide going forward what you want to do, but I think the, the bill you have in front of you is a cost already incurred.
That's fine. I mean, maybe get that on...
Do we send them a letter, tell them, "Well, before you go and incur any more costs, you might holler at us, or we're not gonna write you a check, or we may not write you a check, or..."
I think that's, yeah.
Because right now, we just gave them an open checkbook. So here, have a good day, you know.
I definitely...
Tell them super rates are nice.
We called up at the beginning of the year, when we signed the contract, that we wanted an estimate of cost, and we're, we're way above and beyond the estimate.
Was that not to exceed price?
No. Technically, not in the contract. It's something Jill worked out with the interns.
Okay. Let's just get that on closed session for next week so we can discuss.
All right.
I had a couple of things. The Parkview NID, are we complete? Has Eric gotten you everything that we need, or...
By the end of this week. Instructions should be complete. I think that's why we had to, I know, that's why we had to move that date back, so when Eric gets back on Monday, he can get all the final totals and make sure the project is complete, and then we will be moving forward on that, and so...
Okay.
And we had a ratings call Friday.
Which I think went really well.
Yeah, I think it went really well.
Okay.
So we should have our rating this Friday?
Yes. We should know when we got rated by this Friday.
Then we've had several emails about the eclipse, that we need to get something put out to offices, are we willing to close offices for an hour? I think we brought this up here at a previous meeting. I mean, I'd be inclined to close offices for an hour, but I'm not gonna close for the whole day.
No, no. I agree.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, too.
Just around the time of the eclipse.
Christie emailed that, that's why I was the responder. I was planning on letting Larry Vincent close up for an hour. He already left, though, so...
Can we, do we leave it at the discretion of the office?
Yeah.
It's fine.
Like, if they want to stagger their people during the overall time of the eclipse, they can...
Well, I guess where I was at is that, I'm okay with, I mean, obviously, you can't close. We have extra people. We have another meeting this afternoon with the state. All right. I'm okay with saying we're gonna close from this time to this time, so that everybody could go watch. Now, I'm not gonna tell you, or Steve, or Larry, or what they need to do, but I'm okay with saying we're gonna, county officers are gonna be closed from, what is it, one to two, or two to three, or whatever, or one-thirty to two-thirty. I mean, I don't know what time that happens, but...
Two and a half minutes, all they need is about that.
Well, but you have a, it's the progression to the total eclipse, and then you've got the, where it receives back to daylight.
I guess my, my thing is just that you have some offices that stay open and stagger their lunches, so you're gonna have the person whose normal lunch hour is from one to two or whatever, could they go out and watch the portion before that? So could you have each office stagger their hour, depending on when your lunch falls, kind of thing?
I think they can do whatever they want.
Yeah, I think we just leave it to their discretion.
I mean, obviously, bring a snack and take a late lunch. I don't really care. But not everybody's gonna do that.
That question is gonna come up. Is it, we're only closed this hour, or is it, you know, you take your hour from eleven to twelve, and you take your hour from twelve to one, or...
I just think that we need to be consistent countywide, that we're gonna close offices from this time to this time. And then we post it on the door. Obviously, sheriff and EMS, they can't close, but, you know, Public Works, they may not totally close, but if those guys wanna, they're out on the job or whatever, they can take an hour and watch it, or whatever.
I had somebody in Saturday who works for MoDOT, and what they've told their crews who are out on highways, that they're basically, because they're hearing that there's gonna be a lot of cars pulling off the road to watch it, and for the safety of their crews, they're gonna, like, shut down for two and a half hours from doing what they're doing, just because they keep projecting traffic jams and cars sitting on the side of the road viewing and stuff, and so...
The sky is falling.
And obviously, you know, they've got to have their essential people stay there.
It'll be livestream, they can watch it on TV.
They can stagger those people, I mean, if, if they have to. I mean, I would, I would hope that people be able to work that out.
And that helps. So what time are we gonna close? I'll, I'll get with Bill Farr to find out exactly what the ultimate time is.
It's fine.
If, if that's okay.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Yeah.
And then, obviously, they don't have to record that anywhere on their time sheet.
And if anybody causes problems with it, we're gonna nix it. So no stupid questions, no coming to us and saying, "Well, can we have an hour and three minutes?"
The news review had it right. They said the county and the city's offices were open. Channel seventeen was saying Cole County offices were closed.
I've never heard that.
I did Saturday morning. I called them up at quarter seven in the morning and said, "Take that off, because..."
I'm surprised we didn't get some calls.
"We're not, we're not closed." I said, "The state offices in Cole County are closed, but..."
We'll be open, but just tell her about we're closed. That way, nobody's hearing, and we can just go outside and watch it. See? Preventive maintenance.
I'll work something up, and I'll let you guys see it before I send it out.
It's fun. So on the other, the eclipse as well, we got another request, which I don't know, did you guys get the email from, I think it was from Jill Stottgrass or something?
I didn't.
On, you didn't get that? I'll forward that to you.
No.
You got it, Jeff? It's from info@eclipse, I don't know, telling about the economic impact and...
Oh, I did, yeah, I saw that.
Asking, okay. Asking for money, so, because I had, I had emailed Diane Gillespie and told her that there wasn't a whole lot of support, so...
I talked to her this morning, she called. Because I had asked her if they had talked to the Callaway County Commission, because Roger Fisher was in the store, and they didn't know anything about twenty-five, thirty-five thousand people being in Callaway County on the day of the eclipse. And so she called me today, and she said they'd been dealing with Lieutenant Williams, the JCPD, and they didn't want to step on the city's toes and Jill's toes, so no, they did not contact the Callaway County Commission. So I sent Gary an email and just said, "Just FYI, there could be twenty-five or thirty-five thousand people in Cole County the day of the eclipse."
I, as far as giving them money and everything, I think we've got plenty of stuff that we're doing that's contributing as in-kind.
Okay.
And then if we give to one, we're gonna have another one, and then another one, and, you know, you know, Eastside Business Association, why wouldn't they ask for it? Why wouldn't Lawrenceville and St. Thomas start asking for money today? Throw us some money. We need some porta-potties down here. We're gonna have like twelve more people in St. Thomas that day. It's gonna like double our population, man. Sky is falling.
Okay.
I'm gonna work that day long. You want me to stay in here? I'll keep it open.
Yeah, you want to?
I'll look at the pictures on Facebook or something.
I do suggest we close on October fifteenth, though.
Sam, I thought you quit having birthdays a long time ago. I gotta write that down. Is that date even on the calendar anywhere?
It should be.
Well, it should be, yeah.
I thought they took it off.
I've got a question to bring before the commission. This is sort of a burden situation, and actually, I'm looking for the action over anything. And we've been talking to Debbie also, one of my, one of my jailers, his wife had a baby, and he's been with us five months. She's got heart issues. They've already transported her up to St. Louis. I mean, we're, we're taking care of her, we're scrambling some money together right now to help them with expensive stuff, but he's gonna run out of sick leave, and I don't know if it's, if it's the commission, because right now, you have to be here a year before you can get on the, the sick leave program or the...
Care leave.
The Care Leave program. I didn't know if there was a way to waive that within an emergency situation like this, or is that something that y'all, I didn't know, I don't know the direction or who I should go to.
And unfortunately, the bylaws of the Care Leave Committee is for the employee only.
Right.
The committee would have to meet, this is how we normally do it, if we want to change those bylaws or change anything, and then bring it to the count, to the commission for approval. So unfortunately, it's a little bit of a process, but we can talk about it as a committee and make our recommendation to you guys, and we can get that meeting together within the next day or two.
So when they donate Care Leave, do they donate it just in general to this pot?
Yes.
Or can they say, "Look, hey, I want this going to one of my coworkers"?
It has to go in the pot, and I agree that it needs to go in the pot, because if that's the case, then none of, none of Public Works then would give to anybody but Public Works people and so forth and so on. And I'm not picking on them, I'm just, it's an example.
Can you get, can you get the committee together, then?
And I don't know how. I know this kid runs out of time Wednesday.
Yeah.
So, and that's why, that's why, that's why I came up here, because I've been at the fair and doing some other stuff, so I wasn't aware of everything that was going on. So I will, then I'll get to Debbie, and we'll get that, hopefully get that, that program going, and then come back with a recommendation here. But anyway, thanks. So I said, it was, they just told me about it in there, so I felt it was urgent enough to come in and not be on the agenda. I apologize for that.
All right.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I just hadn't had a chance to respond back. It just happened, so that's the only thing I was gonna do, is get the committee together first.
Okay.
See what they thought, and then come back to you guys.
Yeah, let's follow-up procedure. I got an email from Kurt Mueller, who's the Safety and Security Coordinator of Jessy Public Schools. They'd like, request a consideration to place a crosswalk on Pioneer Trail Drive near the Pioneer Trail Elementary School. Put it on the agenda for a future Cole County Commission meeting. School's gonna be starting here pretty quickly, so...
So I need to go to Traffic and Safety first?
Says they've been working with Eric Landwehr to discuss potential options for a crosswalk. We hope this will improve safety for pedestrian traffic on Pioneer Trail Drive, meet the satisfaction of commissioners, residents, school staff, and student families.
We got the crosswalk at fifty and business fifty, so I don't, I don't know where it needs to go, but I think it needs to go to Traffic and Safety first.
Okay.
And then let them bring a recommendation to us.
I'll check with Eric when he comes back and see.
I mean, because it could be, could be that they need a stop sign, it could be that they need other things besides just a crosswalk.
Yeah. I'll check with Eric when he's back, see where we're standing. Okay.
And did you guys get that, I know Jeff got the letter from Carrie on MSP for next budget year, wanting for five thousand dollars to help with improvements over at MSP, so anyway, just wanted to bring that up.
Anybody wants to go to the celebration tomorrow at the Columbia Regional Airport? It's under the big tent. Big Daddy's BBQ and Kona Eyes.
Can I bring him the check?
Will you take some Jeff City flyers to put on the wall up there, so that people know that Jeff City exists when they fly into Columbia? Not kidding.
Bring some stickers, too, that put up their Columbia slash Jefferson City Regional Airport.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm gonna go or not.
Take some signs.
Follow me to the Capitol.
If they, if they recommend a name change, I'd consider giving them money, but until then, uh-uh.
Okay. Anything else?
Anything else?
So we're gonna look at this request then for 18, or was she looking for...
I was for 18.
I put in my budget for next year.
Okay.
That's what I, my understanding is.
Okay.
She said we had done it the year before, and then it didn't get in last year's.
Did it in 16, yeah.
It didn't get in this year's, yeah.
Maybe we go into closed session, present to Section 610.021 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri for Legal Actions, Sub 1, and Personnel Issues, Sub 13.
Second.
Real call?
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.